Good afternoon and welcome to the joint meeting of the Olaugway County School Board and the Olaugway County Board of County Commissioners on September 12th, 2019. I'll be chairing the meeting along with Chair Chestnut and would like to welcome all of you. If we do have a public input section at near the end of the meeting, and I do have one form filled out, so if there's anybody else that was planning to speak, we do have a three-minute limit, and if you could turn the -- over to Brian Moore, attorney in the back, waving his hand, he'll take the forms. So first, I'll call for a motion from the school board member to approve our agenda.
So move.
A motion by Dr. McNeely, seconded by Ms. Rory, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. This is not the time for public comment.
Normally, the public gets a chance to comment.
Normally, that's not the way we do it. So please have a seat. Chair Chestnut.
Good afternoon and welcome. You all, I'd like to call to order the Olaugway County Board of County Commissioners' joint meeting with the school board of Olaugway County for order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Got a motion of the second. Any further discussions than motions on the floor? We know the citizens, so are there any citizen comments to the motion?
As you noted, sir, the GRU budget will be on the agenda tonight. I'd like to go to that meeting and protect your interests and my own interest, and there's a big rate increase coming that will impact both of your boards dramatically. And I would like the opportunity to make my citizen comment at the front of the meeting because it may be something you want to discuss amongst yourself, and that is our ever escalating GRU bills. And also the fact that the local legislative delegation will be meeting on September 23rd, and I can assure you that the matter of GRU will be the subject of that meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we've already had an agenda approved by the school board and by the county, so we both put those items at the end, so, you know, just want to be respectful for the school board and we agree to the agenda and all that stuff.
Okay, I'll track the meeting from my home and I'll come back at the end. Hopefully, I'll be able to do that and go to the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, those in favor of the motion, vote by the sign of aye. Those who vote the same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have six items. First five that are listed were brought by the commission, County Commission. The last item was brought by the school district. So if we could go ahead with Prairie View Elementary update, and I'll let you, Commissioner Chestnut, if you have anyone that wants to comment or ask anything about that, or would you like us just to move ahead?
Commissioner Cornell. So, thank you. I don't know which of the county commissioners brought this up. I got a little bit of an update at the Children's Trust meeting, but we were hoping to get an update from the school board on the current plans of Prairie View, if you could share that with us, and the timeframe of what those current plans are.
Very good. I'll turn this over to Superintendent Karen Clark, and I'm sure she'll address it or ask Mr. White to address it.
Correct. I'll ask our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Mr. Paul White, to go ahead and approach the dais. Currently, the plans for Prairie View are to bring the school back up to appropriate code because it has not been utilized in some time, and use it as a possible swing school, for lack of a better word, as we are doing renovations in our schools, just because construction time can be greatly reduced if we can just clear the entire site as a construction zone rather than trying to wall it off, fence it off, move children, et cetera. So where we're able to do that, obviously, that's a better plan. So the tentative plans right now are to use it first for Idowild, and then as we move through that, Williams would be a next option to go in there as soon as the work at Idowild is done, Flo Williams in there next. Past that, I think it would determine where we are with what school construction at that time, as to which school we would use, but I can have Mr. White address timelines more specifically.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Superintendent covered most of it. We plan on starting, we plan on completing construction on Prairie View in June of 2020. So we'll be moving very quickly to do that, and actually then starting construction on Idowild in June 2020. So we have selected the general contractor for the construction management of risk for that. We have the design team selected for that, and so we'll be moving forward just as quickly as we can by putting that school back in operation, and as the superintendent indicated, it'll save us significantly on the cost of redoing Idowild.
So Mr. White, the Prairie View will be used by the kids for definitely for 2021, 21, 22, and right now, you'll see kind of where you are at that point, and then perhaps even after that, continuing to use it.
We'd like to use it as many times as we can because if we simply have a construction site as opposed to trying to do construction while school's operating, it was very limited. You have software testing, et cetera, et cetera. So it extends the time to a multi-year project, and then we have to pay those general condition costs from the general contractor, so.
What's the capacity of Prairie View?
It's around 600. We may, depending on Idowild's, I wanted to say capacity, but not capacity, but attendance has been up and down. Right now, we think we may be able to have them all in the building. If not, we may have to add a portable one or two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd just like to add to that. I just think it's a smart. I do. I do. I just want to say that I think it's really a smart solution. I'm excited. In the 22 years that I worked with this school board, I had opportunity to be involved with activities at that school. It's a charming, lovely campus, and I am so excited to know that the school board is committed to making sure that it stays in operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Chestnut, I'll again turn this over to you as far as who you want to discuss. Do you have anyone with a question concerning the after-school public transportation?
I have a question about, well, it, I don't, it, the after-school, I think we've had some talk about the RTS covering some of those children, and I think that we'd heard some concerns about it, younger children use, having access to those things. I don't know if you all are in the discussion phase of all of this. I don't see that middle or high school kids would have problems using that, but, you know, in terms of the young kids, I don't know if that's part of your discussion or not. Also, I don't know if I can bring this up during this time with bus transportation too, but that I had someone question whether there is an opportunity for kids to be transported from Hawthorne for the dual enrollment program. I don't know if that is, you know, I don't know, I didn't see any place else I could put that there except for the transportation here too, but I do know that there were some students in Hawthorne that might qualify for this program if they had access to transportation. So I didn't know if there was any transportation now that was accommodating kids in the outlying areas who may not have transportation to get in.
Thank you. I can address the Hawthorne situation first. Mr. White, I believe, could address a little bit more with RTS. We have not been involved in formal discussions with RTS for younger students, probably for some of the same concerns that others would share with unaccompanied minors potentially on public transportation. But we do have situations where our high school students, where in the past, and if students even need them now, we use some of our workforce adult education funding to purchase bus passes for students in the afternoons if they're staying after school at the high school level, for credit retrieval, you know, making up work tutoring, even some that are staying for sports. We're able to purchase those. If one of our activity buses is not going in their neighborhood, we're able to provide that for them if they request that, and the schools generally request that through those offices.
Are there any of those bus availabilities to kids in the outlying areas who may be coming into town for that kind of activity?
Those buses don't normally run far outside of the routes that they serve, so there is a Hawthorne activity bus, but it serves the zone of Hawthorne. Newberry has one that serves the zone of Newberry because these are, and the activity buses in the afternoon are pretty much for students, the bulk of them riding are for sports. There are still some other things, clubs and whatnot, but the general ridership are, you know, football players after practice, basketball, you know, depending on what sport season it happens to be. For Hawthorne for dual enrollment, we do have a small group of students at Hawthorne that actually do participate in dual enrollment. Anytime you have a college schedule where there's classes all day, every day, evening, in-person, virtual, you know, any combination. We have classes on-site where we run students through a virtual program. We've been in discussion in partnership also with some of the community members in Hawthorne that wanted to bring dual enrollment, some initial courses, like that first English class, the first college algebra class, to Hawthorne, so they were trying to make kind of a combination with our high school students, but then maybe some older folks in the community also to share that. I don't think that's taken off as much as they would have liked because they just couldn't get the enrollment necessary to fund that. But we do have students who participate online. To run a school bus is a little difficult because those course schedules are so different. So I might have an eight o'clock class, but someone else might have a nine o'clock class, and then I've, what do I do before my one or two o'clock class? So that is an area of concern, but we've had multiple discussions with Santa Fe and are actually continuing those discussions right now of, are there ways to bring more dual enrollment opportunities to our more rural areas? Then also, can we potentially bring some to these campuses that are closer in town?
Yeah, that would be great.
Because that's only a 20-minute drive versus a 45-minute drive to the main campus.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the things that was discussed, and this is an instance where I wish the city commission was here with us, but there were folks at the city commission that were talking about making the RTS of public transportation available for the school-aged children so that they could get to different after-school programs that maybe weren't available at a particular school. But what I just heard Superintendent Clark say is the school board has concerns about unaccompanied minors, and so there was a funding request by a citizen for the county, the city, and the school board to participate into funding basically free bus service through RTS for kids. Is there, is there an age limit to where that just isn't possible? Or have you all had any of those discussions at the school board level with regards to kind of unaccompanied minors once they leave your property?
Superintendent.
Well, that's the first we've heard of a joint funding request for that.
I think it's been citizen-driven versus, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. I know that there are some districts that have started looking in that direction. I know Leon is one that was going to do it, and then Denton, and I'm not sure where they are with that now. We haven't raised any official concerns. I mean, if, I think individual parents might have that concern, but are there ways potentially with permission forms or something like that? I don't know how RTS feels about that with unaccompanied minors and on their, you know, that I don't know because we've not had those discussions, but I mean, we certainly am happy to be a part of that discussion as a work group or committee or anything.
May I add to that too, that sometimes a consideration may be behavioral issues that an RTS driver may not be able to, be qualified to address. If you ask any school bus driver, it's probably one of the hardest jobs, if not the hardest job, that there is in the school district, but that might be a concern too in terms of how many, especially if there's a group of young children on a bus riding with the general public, that an RTS driver may not be qualified to handle that kind of behavior.
Ms. Rory.
I don't know if my mic's on. Is it on?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know that we've ever had a request for an elementary school after-school program because normally their day is finished when the school day is finished. It's not like they stay for athletics or things like that, so, you know, I don't remember ever having a request for a young elementary school rider.
I would think this is certainly an area that's worth exploring to see what other districts have done. I don't, you know, initially, I really don't see any way it works for elementary kids, but if there's a way to make it a win-win, then it doesn't hurt to talk. So, and I think that's something that we can talk, certainly talk about that in our regular board meeting, but I think that's something, at least from my view, that we could put staffs, our staff members together in that area and see where it goes. Can't hurt to talk.
May I add one more thing? I think Erby Elementary has an after-school program for their elementary schools. I don't know if anybody else does, but that might be the case where someone would need a child transported at the end of the day, by five o'clock, or whenever it is they close those programs, but there are some of these elementary schools that offer after-school programs until, so they're.
Extended date.
Yeah, an extended date, that's it, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have my mic off.
Oh. Dr. McNeely.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to address what we're discussing right now. I think it's a great idea for exploration as far as the ridership for after-school, including elementary. I think that we would have to have a limit as far as age requirement, but we have a lot of programs. Take, for instance, at Bishop, we have a huge science activity for families in the evening, and it's so difficult for some families to get back because of lack of transportation. So if the ridership would allow elementary kids, and their parents may have to pay, but the ridership would be free for the students, here is an extreme time that we would have more children being accommodated for a program such as that. So I was just thinking out loud, I know by serving on the board with the community school, that has become a huge issue for children being able to get back for nighttime and afternoon programs, tutoring especially, if we need to have children to stay longer for tutoring. Here is another situation that could help eliminate having to be transported by a parent or whatever, just saying.
I think it's worth, absolutely worth exploring.
May I add one more thing to, I can't, and I love being here because I feel at home here with all of you school types, but it, I, when I was at Westwood, we would not charter, but let the RTS system know that we were taking class to Santa Fe College, to the zoo. We would get on right outside of Westwood, get on the bus, and go maybe for an event like this that you're talking about, that we could maybe reserve or at least make an appointment, you know, for, with RTS that would pick up folks like that, because we have used it in the past when we didn't have access to the public, to the school buses.
Chair Chestnut, I think Commissioner Cornell.
Yeah, just a last comment to wrap this up. At the Children's Trust, we are in the process of developing a request for proposal for various programs for the community to bring back to us innovative ideas to increase service capacity of existing after-school programs. And one of the things that the boost group has identified as the major problem, the major issue, is transportation. And so to the extent it can just kind of be on your radar screen as those, the communities having those discussions and perhaps putting together those proposals, to the extent we can leverage either our existing school buses or RTS facilities to help get more kids into after-school programs for capacity building, I just want it to be on your radar.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Citizens Field renovation partnership, I'm guessing, do you want to have someone address that first, or we have, our athletics director, Mr. Wise, is here and he could speak to this? Okay, Mr. Wise?
I thought I was here to answer any questions anyone had, but if it's an open-ended offer for support, we're all ears.
Well, may.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 it's, my question, has the city contacted you folks yet about how they want to partner with the school board in terms of renovation of Citizen Field, in terms of anticipating new development that might be happening out there?
No, ma'am, not with me at least.
All right. So you haven't, you haven't been in contact with the city?
No, ma'am.
Because I think, I have heard in some of our conversations with the city that they were going to try to engage your help in making sure that this gets, the renovations get done. So heads up, that'll be coming your way.
We're in a, we're in the last five-year phase of a 40-year lease agreement with the city, just for everyone's knowledge. It was signed in 1984 and expires in June of 2024. So it was a 40, the city technically owns it, legally owns it, and we are responsible for it, and the folks who work out there, our school board employees and so on, and we pay for the capital improvements and the routine maintenance, but the city does own it.
Yeah, I think this was an item placed on the agenda by the county, so if anybody from the board, County Commission, has any further comment or questions from. Commissioner Cornell.
Yeah, I don't know which one of us put it on there, other than that the city and the county have entered into a 10-year CRA agreement whereby the idea is to invest a significant amount of capital into East Gainesville, and the corner of Athan Wall the Road is an important area in East Gainesville, and Citizens Field is an important structure in that corner. I'm surprised that no one from the city has contacted the school board. I guess my question, understanding what you just said, is what are the school board's plans in year six, since you have five more years left, for dealing with activities for the school board, high school activities?
It's a very important facility to us. It's, as everyone here probably knows, it's the home field for Buell's GHS in Eastside, football and soccer. We also play lacrosse out there, and the famous fifth-grade fun day is out there in the spring where 2,000 fifth graders are out there for a morning, so it's a very important facility to us, and I'm assuming we would want to pursue continuing the arrangement because it's the second-largest stadium in the county, holds 4,000 to 5,000 spectators. There's not a lot of those, and it's not cheap to build another one.
So has the school board taken any steps to engage with the city on what the plans are for updating that facility?
I think those are going to be my marching orders now.
I would like that. I think it's an important corner for our community, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else for Mr. Wise? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wise.
Yes, sir.
I did want to mention, I do have some sheets for citizen input, and we have that coming up, and Item D a little bit later, and so we'll make sure that everybody has a chance to contribute at that time. Since there are no votes being taken, other than the, we've already voted on the agenda, we'll save all of the citizen input, as many of you as want to speak, we'll have that again at Item D. So moving on to impact fees, and I, what I'd, I guess we'll start with the county. I have, I think our Assistant Superintendent Shirella has a, like, why don't you go ahead and show us your one slide? Is that, do you have that? You do not have that. Do we have that passed out? Okay.
No, thank you.
Never mind, we'll come back to that. So you can talk about it, but, okay, thank you. So if we could have, I'll turn it over to you, Chair, and which, one of your colleagues would like to discuss this or ask?
I can try it again. I have no idea. How do I amplify myself?
It's all.
Okay. Okay, I'll kick it off. A year ago, I guess, when we met here, we talked about this, and I think, words in anyone's mouth, but I thought that there was interest on the, on the school board in pursuing it, but you didn't want it to interfere with the referendum, the election that was going on, and that you asked us to just kind of cool it till after the election, and then maybe we could talk about it again. So I guess this is the designated annual time to talk about it again. Is there interest on the board? The County Commission had a discussion in which we sort of expressed an interest, some of us did, in pairing this issue with the next one, school resource officers, because I know that, you know, it's a funding issue for the school board every year, and the County Commission, and we feud over it, and I don't want to put words in any of my colleagues' mouths either, but I know there was some discussion about maybe just if the school board would be willing to step up and go with the impact fees, we would just take over the funding of the school resource officers, period, so that we don't have to do this every year.
It's not universally.
Okay. No, no, we didn't agree to anything. We discussed it, and there was a nodding of heads. I won't speak for anyone else, but it's a discussion that I'm interested in having so that, you know, we can kind of put this issue to bed. Advantages, disadvantages are in front of you. It provides a dedicated funding source every year. It's fair, it's the way the county's proceeding with its impacts of growth and development. And then, you know, it's a financial issue, but it's more of a fairness issue in my mind as well, that growth should have to pay its proportionate share of impacts. So I'll stop with that. There is a linkage in the issues. It's, both issues are about money and about the future of both of these bodies, and maybe getting past some of the disagreements and controversies that we have to deal with every single year.
I'll say, Commissioner Barley, your memory is right on target, and that was the gist of the discussion. And, let's see, and I gotta have to say, with different people sitting in different places, if the light comes on, I don't always know. I'm thanking, is that Dr., Ms. Sartin? Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was a citizen when this conversation was had the last time, and I have the slide and some other information that staff, school board staff has provided to its board members. I'm not sure if it was shared with the county members or not, but as it relates to impact fees, I am in agreement with Commissioner Barley that growth should pay for itself. I understand the information that's been disseminated to us to say that impact fees will not cover the cost, the entire cost of a school, but I think as a community, we have to do something to address the issue and the growth that's happening in the western quadrant of the county. We are imposing upon, you know, there's going to be a need for a new school out there. So the school board as a body is going to have to decide, as a policy decision we're going to have to make, and how we're going to manage our growth. Are we going to allow the unfettered growth and approval of building permits in the southwest and the northwest quadrant of the county? And then what are we going to do with the student enrollment in that area? Are we going to adjust our attendance boundaries so that we can use the existing capacity that's in the system, or are we going to continue to build new schools? And then how will we pay for those new schools? So we gotta, at that time, being a citizen, it was my belief that the entire community really should be, the opinions of the entire community should be considered, and the financial impact, because it's gonna, the cost of the school is what, 25 million we're looking at for school line now? So we're gonna have, if we have another, we're gonna probably need another middle school, I think, Newberry, all the elementary schools in the west are overcrowded, so potentially we'd need another elementary school. How are we going to pay for those? What are we going to do with the capacity in the east? So we had, those are questions we're going to have to ask, and there are a lot of schools, a lot, I'm sorry, a lot of residential building that's happening in northwest Gainesville, in the Jonesville area, I can say, on the Archer Road corridor, there's a whole lot. So are we going to continue to, I recall Commissioner Barley almost begging the board at that time to say, is there anything we can do that you all want us to help? You all just want us to help you all to slow down the approval of the permits for building? I mean, nobody wants to stop the building, but we gotta figure out what we're going to do with the additional student population that's happening in that, in that, and that is, sticking our head in the sand is not gonna, is not an option, I don't think.
I'd like to respond just a little bit, and I, and I think, I'm certain those are excellent questions, and so I think what likely is the right move, and I'll discuss this with the superintendent, but I'd like to see a workshop where, where we look seriously at this and then I, at that point, we would be able to craft a proposal and, and from there. But, but I think those are all extremely valid questions. Commissioner, Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I agree completely with Member Surtin. I think when you think about impacts of growth, you have to decide who should pay for it. And if you collectively decide that the growth should not pay for it, which not charging impact fees is that decision, then you're saying everyone else should pay for it. And that's just not fair. Commissioner Barley has said it's not fair, since I've been on the commission, I agree with that. So I think that's the decision. What I remember last year was us stepping back so we could get the infrastructure sales tax, or the sales tax passed, and I think that was a wise move and desperately needed by our community. But I thought I heard a commitment from a majority, if not all of the school board members, to bring this up and address it this year, and I appreciate what the chair just said as far as that process, I think that's a good process. I think that from a timing perspective, you have to think about the 1 mil next year, and maybe the 1 mil should be more than four years or eight years, because that's become kind of a perpetual thing, and it should be. It's an important part of our, our school system. So I will say that I agree with Commissioner Barley on everything except I don't like linking them. You know, I don't, everything's about money. Every line item in our budget is about money, and so I just don't think we should link them, I don't think they're related. I think school safety is, is one issue, and I really appreciate what this school board has done with our sheriff this year to reach an agreement. We'll get to that, I guess, next. But I, I don't think they should be linked. I think it's a fairness issue and really it's just a timing issue with regards to the things that are coming down the pike, and I hope you all address it this year.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchison?
Thank you. 20 years ago, when we would have, when the County Commission would meet jointly with the school board, we would talk about impact fees. And when I think back, you know, to that school board, which was largely elected by the sort of suburbs and what I call the real estate development influences in this community, one of the reasons why I supported everybody that's sitting on this dais now is that we needed to change that attitude, both on the school board and with the school administration, and we have. And it's really time for you guys to, to step up, because if we had had that impact fee in place 20 years ago, that, your next school would be paid for. And if you imposed it right now, we, we know there's 500 houses in Oakmont alone that are going to come online in the next couple of years. And we also know that your impact fee would be in places like Alachua and Newberry and other places that are going to grow extremely quickly. And I think none of us are properly projecting where all of the urban needs are going to be in the future. So it's really incumbent on you guys to move fast. You could, if, if it were the County Commission, we would make a motion that says to our staff, in 60 days, bring back the information in a workshop format for us to authorize you to move forward with the impact fee and then have a public hearing or two about it. And it would be in place. Numerous counties have them in the state. It's, it's not rocket science, it's, I mean, you can, you can go and see how they do it everywhere else, modify their approach, and it would be in place. Whenever impact fees are polled, in straw polls and other kinds of polls, they're overwhelmingly approved by the electorate, because, you know, they almost always get 70 to 80% approval rating, because people do believe that new growth should pay for itself. And so you all need to get on it, because right now is a perfect time to get started, if not 20 years ago. Thank you.
Doctor McNeely's been waiting very patiently. I'd like to ask her to go next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am so glad that we are back at this point again and with the impact fees and with all of the growth that's westward, we know that those funds, if generated, would be for the growth and the building and construction in that area. And so if the chair is correct in saying that we will workshop this, I'm sure we will be talking about what happens then with funding, because you certainly can't use those funds, but what will happen for this side of the community as well. As far as Commissioner Cornell, I don't, I don't necessarily agree about the linkages, but I liked the fact that I heard Commissioner Barley said, it's certainly a caveat for us, that we would no longer have to deal with the sheriff and all of the funds that we put out for our children's safety. So I like that. I'm ready to workshop that right now, so that we will not be sitting here next year at this time, trying to deal with the safety issues of Alachua County students and the sheriff's department. If that is a caveat for us or for your board, I hope that we would certainly consider it.
I just wanted to comment that with Chairman, your, Mr. Hyatt, your comment about all of us being elected by the whole group of the county, everybody, that we're all elected by the county, that makes us a very unified team if we can pull this together, and it's a powerful, it's a powerful team that if we can work together to get this stuff done, because I'm watching all this growth coming too, and I realize that, that we're missing an opportunity not to include those folks in the financial growth of this community as well. So I'm excited about the unity and the, the power that we could present to the community as a team.
Okay, Ms. Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. You know, ever since I've been on the board, which is almost 15 years, I have been trying to get impact fees, way back when Commissioner Hutchison said 20 years ago, I was the biggest booster, because it is the fair way to do things. And reading Jean Bowles' background on this, I, it makes it even clearer that there's just no reason why we shouldn't have them. But the superintendent at the time didn't want to hear a thing about it, unfortunately, because if we'd gotten it started, even if we had to reduce it during the recession, as other districts have done, 37 districts in the state have impact fees or, you know, have withdrawn them, and we don't know if they've reinstated them since the recession has improved and gone away, hopefully. But, so, I'm in favor of doing something. We don't get anything from Oakmont though, because Oakmont donated the property in lieu of impact fees. So none of their thousand homes generate any impact fees. So that's a big development that we don't have income from, wouldn't have income from. One thing in here that was raised by the city, by, no, it wasn't the city, it was UF, presented, made me think about the whole issue, in that they said that low-income people are struggling to pay for housing, and often pay more than 30% of their income for housing, which is, you know, the industry standard, they're paying as much as 50% and even more. And the point of this presentation was that if, if you had impact fees, that would make things even more difficult for these people that are struggling right now. And at first I dismissed it, because I thought, well, these are not the people that are going to be buying a home in a high-growth area. But, you know, as I thought about it more, anybody who wanted a two-bedroom apartment, you know, in that area would be affected, because their rent would be greater if it was built when we had impact fees. So this is something to think about. One of the things that is a little worrisome is that, you know, we thank God for the generosity of this county, have our sales tax income, and also the 1 mil, which provides art, music, and, you know, technology and many other things, vitally important, because we're so underfunded by the state in all kinds of ways, that we need that 1 mil, we need the halfpenny, and because our required local effort, which is set by the state, limits the amount that we can raise from the community by virtue of what the state tells us we have to do, we have to come to the community and ask for help to keep the public schools running and in good shape, and providing the services we want our kids to have. And we appreciate deeply the support that the community's given us, but if we have impact fees, is that going to endanger the passage of the 1 mil a year and a half from now? That's a bit of a worry, I think you mentioned it. And the one thing also about ASO taking over, we would, I mean, that's not a good deal for the county, sorry to say. I mean, you'd be paying a lot more than we would be getting in impact fees, a lot more. So, you know, like Doctor McNeely said, we'd be glad to have you take over that, that responsibility. But, anyway, just, just saying, I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Any other comments on the subject? Okay, moving ahead to school resource officers, and as, as has been said earlier, we did come to an agreement with Sheriff and her department this year, so for this year, we're okay. And if we want to discuss this, I guess, we'd be thinking more about in the future. That's great, we can do that. So Chair Chestnut, I'll turn it over to you for any of your members that want to address it.
I have something I want to say.
Okay.
Commissioner Barley?
Yeah, the issue of the county picking up the cost. The sheriff negotiates hard with you all each year to try to get a certain ratio, and that's because she's trying to make sure she can recover enough for her budget as well. But at the same time, the sheriff has made the argument, and I've gone back and forth with what I think about it, she's made the argument that she doesn't see deputies in the schools as security that has been hired by the schools, she sees it as just another district or operating office in the community, just like our different, another zone, you know, the county, they divide up the county into different zones, Alpha Zone, Bravo, blah, 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 around the county, and the schools are another zone. Law enforcement is funded as a whole, and it's the sheriff's responsibility to try to decide how to allocate the resources. Sheriff made the decision unilaterally a few years ago, after Sandy Hook, to move deputies into the schools. At that time, there was no charge for that, not in that first year, because she felt that was the place where those deputies who were on the streets should be in order to best enhance overall safety for the community. She thought about it that way conceptually, and I didn't buy it at first, but I'm, I'm kind of seeing it these days, it makes a certain amount of sense to me. So that's why I brought it up.
Is this being recorded?
It's being media here. So, so that, that, that framework makes a certain amount of sense to me, and that's why I brought it up. And yes, it was intended to perhaps be a little bit more of a stimulus to do the impact fees, because, again, they're both about financing, they're both about money, and what's fair and who should be paying for what. I think I'm the one, I may have been the commissioner that asked that this be on there, although I don't think I was the only one, I think.
I think we originally asked that be on there before you all came to an agreement, and when you came to an agreement, we just left it on there, because we had talked about it last year.
So, there it is. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts about that? I think I know how the school board members feel about it, and so I guess I'm asking how other county commissioners, if they have any thoughts about it, we've heard from you, Commissioner Cornell. And by the way, is this a meeting in which we can take action? Okay.
Not from the school point of view, but I, I'm, that's.
Oh, you all can take action?
No, we can't. I have no idea about yet.
So you could take up the impact fee issue at the next meeting, that you all have at your regular meeting?
Yeah.
Yet to direct a workshop?
But we don't have to, I don't think we have to have an, an action, we don't have to have a vote to schedule a workshop. So I, we'll, I'll be talking to the superintendent about it.
That's how you're going to do it. All right, thank you.
Ms. Roy?
Thank you. Last year, the school board got a letter from the chair of the commission, asking us to please pay 50%. And to me, that was, it was just, you know, borderline offensive, because we're happy to pay 50% if we felt like we got an equitable deal from the sheriff, you know, in that, in line with what other law enforcement agencies were charging us. You know, she had many, many expenses on her budget that exceeded what other agencies were charging us. And one of them was having, I think it was three supervisors in addition to the officers. GPD doesn't do that, but that was a big expense, you know, because they weren't officers, you know, in the, you know, they were elevated, they had higher ranks and more expensive. I mean, just one thing, I mean, things silly like hand sanitizer was on there, for heaven's sakes, itemized, you know.
Stuffed in hats.
Hats for the officers, which nobody's ever seen, and, you know, one of our officers wearing a hat that cost $110 or something, you know. It was padded, in my opinion. And so we're happy to pay 50% if it's, if it's in line with the other agencies' charges. We have several different police departments that serve as the schools, as friends and so. So just want to say, you know, please understand our position too. Thank you.
Ms. Surtin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I, I want to kind of push back on the linkage of the impact fees and the law enforcement, I don't think that they should be coupled, being, my profession tells me that when we book revenue and expense, we match revenue and expenses, and right now, impact fees and law enforcement don't agree. Growth has nothing to do, in that sense, with law enforcement for school services. Although the resource offices are needed in the schools, I do agree with that. I kind of, I see Ms. Roy and my other fellow board members' perspective, so I don't know if you guys are familiar with what the sheriff gave us, she gave us an itemized billing of, for each, what it costs to put each of the deputies in the school, and she was actually trying, she's actually recovering the cost of their uniform expenditures, the depreciation of the vehicles and all of that stuff, so that big bag they have in their car, all their uniform, the gun, all that stuff, she kind of included that in the pricing of what it takes to put an officer in the school. So she just kind of, you know, standard cost of the items, all, everything it takes to outfit that deputy. And, and I told my colleagues that she really, everything that she had on the list, the deputies do have it, because my husband has it. I've seen all of those things, he has it, I mean, he hasn't, I mean, he has all of that stuff. So it wasn't that it was unreasonable, but I think some of my colleagues took issue with her recovering that from us, and they were thinking that it wasn't something that was needed, but it, it is the cost of the equipment when she sends that deputy out, because he could be called from the school to go to some other situation, and he has to have all of that paraphernalia. So I kind of, I see the, the balance that we're trying to get to here, where we have one agency, all of us are collecting taxes from the, from the citizens. All of us are collecting taxes from the citizens, so we have to be cognizant of that. And I think it's, we want to be billed fairly and for what the true cost is and not pad it. But at the same time, we can't ask the Sheriff to cover a cost that is rightly, should be incurred by whoever she's providing services to. So it would be unfair for her to provide services to the school district and then to come to the county and ask them to increase her budget so that she can provide citizens outside of the school district. So it really is a balance. I mean, it's a balance of us trying to not impose upon our citizens more fees than what we have to, but to ask her to provide something to this governing body at a lesser cost, I think, is unfair. But I don't, I just said all that to say I don't think we should link the law enforcement fee to the impact fee. And I think the impact fees, I am all in favor of us having workshopping of whatever is that needs to be done, but not just workshopping it, it being an agenda item so we can take action on that. That is something that I'd like to see done in the very near future, like 60 days, as Commissioner Hertz suggested.
Thank you, Ms. Sartin.
Ms. Cornell?
I was just going to say thank you for both of that clarification. What I hear you saying is you're happy to pay 50% if it's in line with other agencies. And to, and to Member Sartin's point, to the extent that there are resources provided to that deputy so that they can leave the school if need be, like Commissioner Byerly was talking about, I agree, that should be a county cost, that's a county-wide cost. So this is helpful for me in understanding where you all are coming from. And I guess the only question I had is, is it the School Board's intent to kind of build out a police department? Or is it the School Board's intent to continue to rely on the agencies around the county? I think right now, you contract with GPD, the Sheriff, and is it Alachua and High Springs?
PD and High Springs.
Yeah, and High Springs. Because to the extent, I will, I will make an effort to understand kind of their costs and how they're charging you and.
Right. I think, I think it, I think it would be fair to say that just based on, I don't, we haven't had a discussion where we have an exact plan of what we're going to do next year or two years or three years from now. I, I, I think there is a consensus that we would like to keep the relationships we have now, if that's at all possible.
Yep.
I don't, but every year, as, every year, it's, it's a difficult negotiation. When, when two years ago, the money, we doubled the amount of money, that wasn't enough. This year, so we met halfway. And then this year, there was a significant raise again, because what we have done is pass on 100% of these school safety monies from Tallahassee, with the only deduction is our, our security chief, his salaring benefits, his office, that's it. Every, every other penny goes to the law enforcement officers, to the department. So I, I think, you know, we've, if you just look over the last several years, we're not trying to bank any money. Every penny goes out.
The only reason I bring that up is I know the city of Newberry had a similar kind of discussion about starting their own, and they concluded it was, it was too expensive. You have, and I'll conclude with this last question. I would be very much in favor of a multi-year agreement, a two- to four-year agreement, if we could get all the agencies in line, if the School Board was. And I just wanted to hear if that was, if your intention was to expand into your own police department, or if it was to continue to contract with the different agencies? And if it is, and perhaps a multi-year agreement would get you in a better spot.
I think our biggest difficulty with that, and I'd like certainly for the Superintendent to correct me on this, is the uncertainty of what happens in Tallahassee.
Sure. It would not be.
And because we, if we just extrapolate current funding, but you never know what, you know, what you're going to get.
If there was a chance.
So I, I think, I think that's certainly something that some of our Board members have advocated. But I, so if that's a possibility, that's just something else we need to look into. Dr. McNeely.
Thank you. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but as I stated 15 minutes ago, based on what Commissioner Byerly said, I can understand that your Board would work on some things to help us with the impact fees. I'm not trying to link, I'm just trying to dissolve, and not dissolve, because that's not a good word. We have a great, I think we have a great relationship with our Sheriff and, and the Department, as well as all of the other agencies that take care of our safety. But to alleviate us, even if we had to give your Board the money we get for safety, but you all are going to take care of everything else, let's talk more about that and really be encouraged by that for our Board.
That's different. What you just said is different. I can talk about that.
Well, we need to have that. I'm telling you, friends of the county, we need to have it, and we need to have it before this time next year, when the budget comes back up for the Sheriff. Okay? We, and, and final word from me, I don't want the citizens sitting in here, or the public who will see the video, to think that we are not wanting to have the Sheriff, the GPD, and all of the other agencies. We care about our kids. We need to have the agencies to help us with the safety. As far as our, us having our own department, law enforcement, that's another discussion. We've kind of talked about it, but I'd like to keep who we have right now current, the Sheriff, GPD, the other agencies in Newberry, Alachua, High Springs, whatever. But back to the Commissioner sitting to my right, I respect him even so more today because I liked what he said about taking this off of us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Dr. Paulson.
Did y'all sit down there on purpose?
Excuse me, could I speak?
Dr. Paulson.
Thank you. Going back to what Mrs. Roy said, what bothered us with the Sheriff was, again, I'll give you, I could give you multiple examples. But let's take your supervisors. We asked her, what was the recommendation for their association for supervisors? Came out that they had three. Well, they wanted to charge us four. That's just one thing. There were many things in there. You heard, they wanted to charge us the full amount for brand-new cars. I said, you know, you're a businessman, don't you depreciate things? Oh, yeah, we depreciate things. There were many, many things that she put in there, you know, that we disagreed with. And so I don't see why they needed an extra supervisor than what's recommended when the city didn't even have one or two. But there were other things, and I talked about, you said Newberry, I think Newberry contributes a lot to the, to the cost of the Sheriff's Department for the super, for the resource officer, yet they wanted to charge us double for that, if you remember correctly. So when we dealt with, we dealt with the Sheriff, I don't think she dealt with good faith. I'm not going to sit here and, I wasn't going to say anything, but that's been the holdup, is the way, what she came forward. And then to make the ultimate insult, like Mrs. Roy said, they put down the 89 cents for the hand sanitizer. So I think when you look at that, I think we, you know, this is why we had some tough negotiations with her. And I just thought that needed to be said. It's not, she's not charging us for everything she needs for a call. And it better, you know, the 50/50 is good, but it's very beneficial to have resource officers in the school because you get the heads up on a lot of things that are happening outside the schools by being in the schools and hearing them from the students, because they know a lot of things. But anyway, that's, I just been hearing how we, there were reasons we had some tough negotiations. So when you, because I know you, you have to deal with her too, with negotiations. I watch TV. So thank you for letting me say that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Paulson. Any further comments on school resource officers? Okay. Next, our lone item on the agenda is employee health clinics, and I'd like to ask our Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, Alex Rela, to speak to that.
Thank you, Chairman. So I'm not sure at the Board of County Commission, how familiar everyone is with our health insurance offerings. We've been a self-insured funded plan for the last six years, and it's been very successful for us. You know, we've been able to save a good amount of money for board priorities and others, and other stuff. So kind of at this point, we've had a lot of preliminary discussions with the Insurance Committee in regards to potentially opening up a health clinic. Obviously, that's significant savings for not just our employees, but also the district. Had some very high-level discussions with county staff just to kind of get a feel for if there's any interest in kind of joining forces. I know you guys have a very successful plan. And at this point, you know, we've had some very preliminary discussions. We kind of wanted to see the thoughts of the collective board, since we have everyone in kind of one room, to see if there was any interest in staff kind of pursuing that going forward.
Ms. Cornell?
Thanks for bringing this up. I will tell you that the first couple of years that the county opened up the clinic, there were some growing pains, but I think that overall, it's been working out very, very well, not just for the county employees, but also, as you probably know, the Sheriff's Department is a part of that. And I would be very open to however we can have efficient health insurance, efficient and effective health insurance for not only our employees, but for your employees, if there are some efficiencies there. I would be, I would be happy to have your staff meet with our staff. And I guess if there's consensus on our Board, I'll make that motion after I hear from everybody.
Okay. Ms. Sartin.
I can clarify with Commissioner, one of the county's health insurance committees.
Mr. Hyatt?
Dr. Paulson.
As far as employee health clinics, I've been involved with our health clinics. Before I was on the Board, I was Chairman of the Health Insurance Committee for 12 years. And I am the Board's representative to the Health Insurance Committee. We listen to our Health Insurance Committee. We have brought up, we have, we've had a long-range plan that's been very effective for us. And the last thing on it has been a health clinic. We've been over to St. John's County and seen what they do over there. They have three health clinics. We've had a FSBA, that's Florida School Boards Insurance Trust, committed, talked to our Health Insurance Committee about health clinics. I have to tell you right now, we listen to our committees. It's kind of like, you know, as a football coach, if I didn't listen to my booster club, which I could take the money all I want, but if I didn't listen, I wouldn't have a booster club next year. So we feel like we listen to our Health Insurance Committee. Now, the committee has been, has voted, voted it down. I am, I have been in favor of a clinic. It's, I don't know if you want to go just to the staff. You're going to have to come and present this to our committee and show them, and we can talk about it in the committee, things like what, we don't even, you know, we don't know, we want to know what our cost would be and how you want to share it. We have concerns, I think you only have one clinic. We have a big district tube, just the same as you have. We look at having more. Do you have a doctor? Do you have a physician's assistant? Do you have a nurse practitioner? These are the things you need to tell our committee, because we rely on our Health Insurance Committee very strongly. We, it's been so good to us that we average less than 5% increase a year for the last 11 years now. Last year was a little bit more, but it's still not compared to what other, other people do. So it's, again, I think that we showed some interest, we talked about this this last week, right, Alex, with our committee? And that's why we wanted this, we wanted to talk about this, have it on the, on the agenda. So if we could have you guys get somebody to bring, somebody to present this to our Health Insurance Committee, we'll be very open to it. But again, we've had some changes on the committee just recently, too.
Sure.
But I think it was like an eight to two vote the last time we voted against. And, you know, like I said, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. We brought somebody in from FSBA to talk to people. But we need the, all the details. I, we don't even know what kind of health insurance you guys have. That'd be interesting to see, too, compared to our health insurance. Those kind of questions we have, and again, it'd be, I think it'd be very beneficial. You get somebody, we get somebody to come in. When's our next health insurance? December?
I think this, first week in December. I think the, the challenge or kind of the, where the staff has been on the subject is there's so much nuance that goes into it, obviously, the financial arrangement, inter-local agreements and stuff. So we kind of just wanted a general kind of consensus, not a vote necessarily from our Board today.
No.
But a consensus on, yes, this is a good plan, let's at least explore it and kind of see where it goes before we, as the staff, invest a lot of time. And of course, we have an Insurance Committee that would definitely.
And we've always paid, we've always, we've never voted the Health Insurance Committee down. And we've been very successful with our Health Insurance Committee. So that's why. Like I said, I'm in favor of the clinics. I think it's a good idea. But then again, let's go into, like you said, the nuances and all, all the details. You come to our, and come to our Insurance Committee and present this to them and see what, if you can convince them things I couldn't. But, because, you know, I, we'd be very interested. We're always interested in giving our employees a better service and to save money at the same time.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Paulson.
Ms. Byron?
I'll just say, yeah, the School Board's interested in it.
Yeah, so I would move that the county staff reach out to the School Board staff to begin exploring how both agencies could pool resources and prepare a joint presentation to both the School Board and the County Commission Self-Insurance subcommittees.
Got a second? Got a motion in a second? Any further discussions of the motion that's on the floor? Are there any citizen comments of the motion that's on the floor? Back to the Board, those who've been paying the motion will by a sign of aye. Those who oppose at the same time, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rela. And at this point, we're coming to citizen input, and I do have a number of folks that have already signed up. I'd like to remind everybody that it's a three-minute limit, and, and issues should be addressed, not personal attacks. We're, we're interested in issues. I saw one person whose subject matter was a question. And it's a citizen input, not a citizen discussion, but if there is a question, what I will, that applies specifically to the School Board, I will try very much to get staff, the appropriate staff member, to get your information and get back to you no later than tomorrow with that, if we can further get an answer to you. So with that being said, our, our first comments are from Jim Colish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've taken a moment myself to analyze how much the School Board and Alachua County Commission pays to GRU going from May 2019 back one calendar year. The School Board on 151 accounts will dish out 5.8 million to the GRU Electric Utility before the increases that will be taken place October 1st. The Alachua County Commission dishes out 3.3 million on 61 accounts. I would like to point out, over these four years, you had 203 accounts. So they're churning your accounts. The County Commission has had 242 accounts, now they're at 61, because they constantly open and close your accounts. And these accounts are full of predatory billing practices. That's why I'm going to ask our local legislative delegation to call in the Auditor General to see what is going on. I sat as a poor person in the blue sad sister house when I graduated from law school, paying a $30 GRU bill for everything. My parents sat in a small apartment in South Florida, paid FPNL. My parents sat in a small apartment in South Florida, paid FPNL $120 for just electricity. I want to show you a comparison between GRU and FPNL across all rate classes. That relationship has inverted. That is why I'm going to ask for a referendum to see if the voters would like to see GRU sold to the best bidder so that the school board and the county commission can A, slash these ridiculous bills, and B, tax these assets. So you don't have to keep coming to us for sales tax, which incidentally is piled on top of our sky-high non-residential electric bills. So if I may, I would like everyone to have a copy of this recent comparison between GRU rates and FPNL rates across all rate classes. How, how do I get this to you without infuriating the officer?
Ms. Ramos, would you get those, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, please reach out.
Mr. Clark.
Well, I'm not going to tell you no, but I'd like to keep going. I'd rather, let's keep going. Okay, next, I hope I can read this correctly. First, well, I got Anna. I got the Anna part, yeah. Prizzi. Prizzi, thank you.
Hello, thank you. I just wanted to speak in support of the impact fees idea today, and also to ask a few questions about it for, hopefully for you all to consider during your workshop. I wanted to speak to what Dr. McNeely and, and Ms. Roy brought up, and that is that these impact fees are a really great idea, but we need to be careful that they don't disproportionately negatively impact those that are seeking affordable housing. Affordable housing is a big conversation in our community. And so a question that I would hope to see answered in that workshop would be if these impact fees would be specifically for brand-new development in relationship to concurrence, so where those impacts are needed, or if they would be spread across any new development in the community? And if they would go to any new development in the community, if there could be some provision for an exception for when developers do decide to take advantage of our affordable housing incentives? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jackie Davis.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jackie Davis. I'm with the Racial Justice Task Force of United Church of Gainesville, and we support very much having impact fees. We feel like growth should pay for itself. Also, I'm a citizen that lives in East Gainesville, and I would like my half-cent facilities taxes to go towards improving schools in East Gainesville, not just building new schools in West Gainesville. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Davis, since I just recently got an email from you, I'm going to respond to your question personally, and we, feel free, we'll, we'll talk. Okay, thank you. Next is Dr. Gwendolyn Simmons.
Thank you very much. I too rise in support of the fees, impact fees, and I'm very pleased to hear, it seems, that there is unanimous agreement amongst the school board members that we should have impact fees and that some of that should go toward building schools, which would then free up some money to help with the much-needed repairs and other things on schools on the east side of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Razia? Razia, Razia M.
Mine's a little bit longer, but hopefully under three minutes. So first, I wanted to say to Ms. Clark, this is with all respect and gratitude for the service of the board. I'm concerned about our low literacy rates in Elachua County. It seems that despite good funding available to our district, we have declines in literacy among our black students and poor students of all races. We have, in our history, success when the right leadership and resources are funnelled to schools that are struggling. We have the know-how. I worked as a, well, my both countries, Trinidad and Tobago. We are black and brown there, and we come from, we're the children of past slaves and past indentured servants. We have a 99% literacy rate. Literacy is not race-based. I also, as an American citizen, was a Pisco volunteer in Rwanda. I was there before, during, and after the genocide. Rwanda has a 71% literacy rate. Elachua County in 2010, east-side schools had a 60% literacy rate. West-side schools had an 80%. In 2016, east-side schools had 30%, and west-side schools had 60%. Our literacy rates are declining for all students. Our black students and our poor students have an even lower literacy rate, from 20 to 30%. As a citizen of Gainesville, I find this personally shameful. It is difficult for me to live with this knowledge that this is what we're allowing to happen and worsen. So I come to you asking, how can we find common ground in moving forward so we can change the situation of the very low literacy rate and proficiency rates of our schoolchildren? This isn't about black or brown or white. This is about our community here in Gainesville, everyone. Children from poor and black families can succeed. We saw it for over a decade in Duval. We can do this. We have to want to do it. My dream, from my hopeful heart, is that we would form an alliance in our county to explore effective strategies and solutions to finding change, to making change happen, and that we have a pathway to then implementing the change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. M. Kylie Blunt.
Hello. Hope to jump into several topics. On impact fees, I know it is important to, to pay close attention to how those are leveraged. Three blocks south of here, I'm now renting an apartment close to the, my damaged house, and that was the goal, to be close to the house. But I'm paying 56.57% rent-to-income living there, just a block from my, my old house. So it is very important how you leverage that, but I think that impact fees could be useful in several ways. For instance, how you set impact fees could be part of the bundle of incentives for, for building affordable housing. So it could be some useful things done with that. I know that the city and county are not responsible for this, for education, that's the school board, but it matters to all of us, obviously, if it's not, if it's your wheelhouse or not. So I wish there'd be more partnerships between the school board, county commission, city commission, maybe also Career Source and the Chamber of Commerce. We need to, we need to bring back vocational education, and there are spaces available and places where it's critical that we're just not doing anything with. There are buildings available at Grace Marketplace, one of the most crucial places for the need for vocational education. So, and that, that whole list of partners could be doing powerful things to solve multiple issues for this community. As to children going to extracurricular activities, years ago, I worked at a college reach-out program, and we had middle and high schoolers, you know, making their own way, busing, biking, walking to Santa Fe Downtown Center. And there was never any, any problem about the kids getting there. There was never any lawsuits against the school board or college reach-out. 11-year-olds are pretty darn powerful these days, able to, to make the trip. So the after-school activities should be started, and, and, you know, maybe we can teach the kids about dealing with particular kind of emergencies we're concerned with coming up in that transit, but they can, they can handle a lot. And I want to congratulate the school board on this year's black history courses in all the high schools. I hope they continue. I have yet to make my planned page-by-page examination of the two textbooks involved, but I will be doing that soon, and I'm anxious to report back to you on what I find in those books, and I hope the county commission takes an interest in that too, because you're going to get it.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have no more requests.
Good evening, good afternoon to each of you. I am Dayan McGraw, and I stand as a Realtor today, talking about impact fees. And I know something, as Realtors and builders, we don't usually like to talk about impact fees. However, I remember back in 2004, I think, or maybe 19 or 20 years ago, when the county implemented impact fees. If we had them back then with the school board, then our schools wouldn't be in the condition I believe they are today. Also, one of the things, when you think about impact fees, it's with, I think Ms. Prizzi had asked about is new construction. Usually, it's impacted or put on new construction, but the money that comes in, because when you think about it, I know too well, in my own business, I have to deal with the agency with personal disabilities. I have to deal with ACHA, which is Agency for Healthcare Administration, and you have to deal with Medicaid. Even with all of the bureaucracy, when you talk about Tallahassee, Tallahassee is going to cut, they're going to do whatever, but it's up to the board. It's up to the vision, for your vision, to think about, to think outside the box, how can we get it done? We can't blame everything on money, because if we do, then we'll never get anything done. And so that's why it's important that you look at your whole budget. So I think a part of what you need to do is when you have your workshop, the school board, you need to bring all of the money that comes in as far as your budget, so your county can maybe, I'd like to see the collaboration, you working together. That's part of the Blue Ribbon Committee. When I served on the Blue Ribbon Committee, one of the things that I asked for was that the city, the county, and the school board, you all have to be able to work together, because that's how you're going to bring about change for everything. You're going to bring about change when everybody can come together and work together. But I think when you have the workshop, bring in your funding, let people see, because one of the problems we have in Elachua County, citizens feel that there's not enough transparency when it comes from the school board, as far as, you don't want to piecemeal this budget, this budget. But when I look at other counties, they have their whole budget where you can see everything. That way, you can look at, you know, prioritize things and make those changes. So I think impact fees would, would work, but also you are working together. It, we can make a difference when it comes to anything, especially for our children, because that's where it starts. Also, as far as after-school transportation, I really hope we can look at that as well, because I want to see with after-school transportation, there are a lot of kids, as she said before, she brought up about literacy. There are a lot of our kids who cannot read in this county, and I think sometimes if they stay after school, even if it's for an extra hour, that will make a difference. There's a great reading program I tell everybody about, it's called Phonographics with Missy Laine-Mann. And one of the things is, is strong in phonetics, and that's a part of a lot of our children's problem. They cannot read. If they cannot read, they cannot do anything else. So we need to begin to look at supplemental curriculums. I know the school adopts curriculums, but you need to start thinking outside the box, because if these kids cannot read, then they're not going to excel. And then, being a former probation officer, they become a part of the county, they become the county's problem, and that's a problem. Thank you for your time.
If you could wrap it up, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I still have no more sheets. Is there anyone else that needed to speak? I certainly appreciate everyone being here. I appreciate the citizen input. I certainly appreciate my fellow board members and our hard-working county commission, and we're all here for a better county, we're all here for better, for the best for our kids, and I appreciate that. So I'll go ahead for the school board, and I'll close our meeting, and Chair Chastain can close their meeting. School board is adjourned.
I just want to thank the school board for continuing the support of the arts. It's wonderful to be in here and see the art continuing, and I appreciate you all making sure that there's still art in school.
I want to thank the school board members for having us over. Maybe we can reciprocate and have you back over anytime.
And I also wanted to put out the offer in hearing about the literacy needs. Thank you for sharing those statistics. However, your county commission can help you, please, if that's thinking outside the box, or if that's extra hours of curriculum, the kids are obviously important to all these county commissioners. However we can help in that area, please let us know.
That's it. Again, I'd like to thank the school board for having us, and thank the citizens who came out and spoke in terms of the issues that they saw was important from the items that we had on the agenda. At this time, I'd like to adjourn the county commission's portion of it. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming.